Please stand as we start the meeting tonight with the prayer. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process. We pray for your direction, which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day with wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your blessing, special blessing, and all those who work and transform our city may get a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Roll call.
Counsel Chow, Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have some memorials tonight. Counsel Mercier, go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of City Councilor Sakari Chow, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Grandmaster Nam Yel Ann. On Monday, October 25th, 2021, beloved Grandmaster Nam Yel Ann, loving husband and father, heavyweight kickboxing champion, Green Beret Army instructor, international Taekwondo referee, and the founder of New England Taekwondo Association, passed away peacefully surrounded by his family. Born in war-torn Korea, he mastered and brought his love of martial arts to Lowell in 1979. He founded Tiger Ran's Taekwondo on Middlesex Street and built the academy from the ground up. In the mid-eighties, Grandmaster Ann was awarded the key to the city for his many contributions and charitable donations to Lowell citizens. His other passion was his family. Grandmaster Ann is survived by his wife, Kaeyoung Ann, his son, Richard Ann, daughter-in-law, Una Ann, and grandchildren, Tiger and Destiny Ann. His life was celebrated with a viewing on Saturday, November 6th, at the dojo. He was an inspiration to his family, students, and friends. He was always the first to praise others, yet he'd be so humble about himself. He made everyone feel special, even complete strangers. He taught life's lessons that inspired generations of families. He embodied, lived, and taught the ten principles of Taekwondo and helped influence many black belts, and many more people have been positively impacted by knowing him. Counselor Chow was honored to say that his two sons, Philip and Matthew, were students of Tiger Ran's Taekwondo, and they proudly displayed their black belts as a tribute to their seonseung nim and dojo. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to offer a moment of silence for Charlie Gallagher, 93, of Lowell. Passed away peacefully on November 5th, 2021, at Duval Life and Wellness Community. He was preceded by the love of his life, his wife, Alice Gallagher. Charlie was born on December 20, 1927, on Sargent Street in the heart of Lowell acre neighborhood, the fourth of the eight children of William and Alice Gallagher. He attended Butler Elementary School, high school, and New England College of Art. Upon graduation from high school, Charlie enlists in the Army, serving in Korea, rising to the rank of Staff Sergeant, and earned World War II Victory Medal. By vocation, Charlie was an illustrator for several decades at the Raytheon Corporation, and by evocation, he was a music man and an impassable showman. He learned the piano by ear on an old upright litterly at his father's knee. And for the next eighty years, he played and entertained everywhere, just on Hampton Beach, at the sea, at the wedding, after funeral, at venues near and far, at formal events, countless Gallagher gathering party, leading song along, and eagerly performed his favorite song, Trouble, from the music man and auctioneer. For Charlie, life was a song preferably in four-part harmony. He was a well-known legendary according to one of contemporary barber shoppers for over a half-century. He sang with many barber shop chorists, including the Anover Showman, Townman, and the Granite State Men, Nashua, New Hampshire, and was a founding member of Lowell gentleman songster. He sang with many different barber shop quartets, including his son, brother, nephew, the Gallagher Four, which he would proudly introduce as two father, two son, two uncle, two cousin, and four friend. He sang from Lowell to Acton Bay, and from Montreal, Canada, to Nidaleen. He sang on the street of Lowell Folk Festival and at many area nonprofit and political gatherings. He thanked, laughed, all for musical part, even creating a barber shop, sly rule, enabled singers to reading transposes from one key to another. There were few things he loved more than ringing a great chord. If a barber shop chorus need a director, an emcee, a trainer, or someone to blow a pitch pipe to ensure that the singer remain on key, Charlie was the man. Charlie was also a recreational inventor, composer, poet, self-published his own book, poetry. Although he was passionate about his barber shopping and piano playing, Charlie's great love was his late wife, Alice. And his greatest accomplishment was a selfless guiding her through nearly a decade of all time, serving as her cook, laundryer, shopper, and so on, to keeping her in his home. And there is where she remained. While for most of his life, Charlie enjoyed excellent how multiple physical challenge beset him in his later life, later year. When he lost his sight, he put down his songbook. When he lost the use of his leg, even though he had cycle his beloved Fourth Hill Park every day, rain or shine for thirty years, he settled into his chair, overlooked the lawn, the park, engaging a pass-by in a friendly banter, through it all, to the end. He never, ever complained. Charlie and Alice left behind many grandchildren and grandchildren. One is our beloved community person, former school committee member, Mike Gallagher and his wife Linda Gallagher. Mike, despite the fact that he's no longer a school committee man, has continued to involve in the empowerment of the Lowell Public School. From all this, may Charlie Gallagher rest in peace.
Thank you. Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's with great sadness that we offer Docking Chambers and Moment of Silence to the family of Diane Wilson, which includes Sula May, who is a sister of Diane Wilson. Her passing was very sad and sudden, lost to this family who had already been struck by tragedy again in less than a year's time. On January 2nd of this year, Diane Wilson lost her daughter in a tragic accident. Diane was the mother of two children, Connor and Caleb. Diane Wilson was caring for these two grandchildren. Eleven months to the date, Diane Wilson Lazo, aged 33, passed away on Wednesday at Newton-Wesley Hospital after a brief illness. She was the beloved wife of David Wilson. She was born in Lowell on September 26, 1948, daughter of the late Gerard Lazo and Rita Parquet. Diane was an avid bingo player. She enjoyed making ceramics and camping at Black Bear Campground at Salisbury Beach for 24 years. She was a former member of the Red Hat Society and East End Club Ladies Exhiliary. However, Diane's greatest joy was spending time with her family and especially her grandchildren. We pray for the family for these losses. May God bless them and their two grandsons, who have lost their mother and now their grandmother. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just have a moment of silence from the podium. If there's no objection, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Albert F. Lenzi, 91, of Lowell, Massachusetts, well-known and respected member of the greater Lowell community. Died Saturday, October 30th, at his home, surrounded by his family. He was the beloved husband for over 64 years of Joan M. Lenzi Leahy, who survives him. Born on May 9th, 1930, the son of the late Bruno and late Mary Sheperd Lenzi. He attended the Immaculate Conception Grammar School, Lowell High School, class of 1948, where he played football and basketball. Al went on to attend the former Lowell Technological Institute, where he played basketball, held many of the school's records in basketball for a period of time, and later, from 1954 to 1958, he became the head basketball coach at Lowell High. Al's career in the food business industry began in 1953, where he opened the Pioneer Sandwich Shop downtown Lowell, which later became Ricky's Dog House, Ricky's Sandwich Shop, a staple in downtown Lowell, which he owned for over 37 years. 1987, he started Lenzi's Catering with his son, Michael. In 2001, they bought the old Windsor House and Restaurant functional, where they continue to work today. Al was also the co-founder, along with Dan Leahy, who was a celebrational life, a fundraiser for the group which benefits mustard seed community in Jamaica. Besides his wife Joan, he is survived by his three sons, Michael, Al, Christopher, his daughter Joanne, his sister Margaret, and 15 grandchildren. Next, we have Mayor's business. Communication, remote, and Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Samaras, second by Counsel Noon. City Clerk, need a motion to accept and place on file minutes of the City Council regular meeting, October 28th, by Counsel Elliott, second by Counsel Mercier. And Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Need a...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules if there's no objection, to take out of order 11.1, City Manager. I have three registered speakers here this evening, and I would respect the fact that they probably don't want to sleep this early in the evening, so if we could get them out.
Motion to take out, where are we, 8, 11, I mean 11.1, out of order by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Noon. Counsel Mercier's motion, request City Manager have the proper department address vandalism of the Portuguese flag and pole, the cleanliness of the Portuguese monument in the back central area, and the constant destruction of property by the homeless who hang around the area. Counsel Mercier?
Yes, thank you.
You want your speakers to go first?
Yes, I'd like the speakers to go first.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulo Godinho.
Okay.
Paulo Godinho.
Good evening. My name is Paulo Godinho. I live in 439 Batman Road, Lowell, Mass. I'm a representative of Portuguese veterans, also some of the Portuguese organizations. Some of you know me for the past, during some years, for the Portuguese flag, the fundraiser, also the veterans. We've been in the Folk Festival for the past 27 years. We built our monument with the help of the city in 1999, and we get a lot of compliments because that's entrance to the city. The past two years, we start having a lot of problems, but now it's disgusting. Since the new court went up, all the homeless move up there. The Portuguese American Center is paying tax for the parking law. At the time I was there, in prison, we were supposed to put a fence around. I make a motion not to do it because it's entrance of the city. It will look like a cherry parking law. Now the homeless take over. Not only the monument, we pay a lot of money for it. They damage the monument, they break the main pole, which was the city's flag, they burn the flag, they take the Portuguese flag down. But we have three poles already damaged, so it's unfinished. Now from the gentleman, they take a picture, but the monument is already cracked. We go in there, we ask them, please move, they don't care. The worst part, the business around there, suffering. The red dresser in Central Street, the husband was supposed to be here, but he was in Boston because of traffic. Her daughter, but she's a lawyer, she left the mother's red dresser, and she left the car in the parking lot. She went there, between the Portuguese American Center, liquor store, it's like a little walkway. At 1:00 in the afternoon, they're having sex up there. She have to pick up a poker book, put in the front of the daughter so the daughter can see it, to go in there. We have dinners on Fridays in the Portuguese American Center for the members, anybody can walk in. A lot of our seniors is afraid to go in there because they have to have somebody to walk them to the cars. They're destroying cars. We have plenty of pictures, and we should develop it to bring you for your guys to see it. Joe is going to speak next. He have everything because he's going there every day. We afraid to clean the monument because it's needles, it's little bottles. They are in there, they do everything there. The cops being helping as much as they can, like on the Fridays, we call them to help us because people, like Saturdays will have weddings, and that's the scum that time have a wedding, and you have to walk somebody to the parking lot. So we need the city's help. We really need, because that's entrance of the city. I mean, you come from the 495 Lower Connector to Goom Street, that's before they got in Central Street. You look up there, it looks like we abandoned that, we no abandon there, we there every day, but we can do everything. So we really need your guys' help. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Valente?
Hi, my name is Joe Valente. I live in 11 Way Street, Lowell. I'm the vice president of the Portuguese American Center. I go there every morning. I get there one morning, was a blanket right in the front door, they slept there, they drink, they eat, and they use that as a bathroom also. I had to fill up a hose and wash out a whole thing, I called the police, but it's so much that the police can do. And they bring them in, they're even finished their report, they are already out again, doing the same thing. We have the problem on the corner of Union and Chapel Street, people dumping furniture there. We had a meeting with the city and the police, they said they were going to put more lights there, they were going to put a camera to cut, to catch whoever's doing it, nothing happened. You know, it's like, people talk about the funding, the police do this, do that, you do that, you ain't going to have no protection. They already had their hands full. We need more police out there to do their job. You know, it's tough for them, and I understand. You know, there's nothing they can do, unless it starts from in here to help them or two. You know, I think that's the only solution we have, because if we can clean the South Common, when the governor comes to Lowell, we also can clean the city, the same way we did it, the South Common. That's my way of saying, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Susan Hudson.
My name is Susan Melo Hudon. I live at 989 Central Street. I work downtown, and I am also the vice president of the General Assembly for the Portuguese American Center. I work a lot with Paul and the board. I'm going in and out of there. I go there almost every other day after work. I'm carrying a laptop, my purse. I've been approached. I have the elderly women that like to come to Family Night, telling me they're scared to come in unless one of the directors or somebody can walk them out. They've been approached. They won't come anymore because they don't feel safe. We have kids that have, we have the Portuguese American Band there, they have their music school on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. Mothers are coming in with their young children and being approached and being scared. They don't feel safe. I parked my car next to the monument, which I did many years, I always have gone, and I've been a member of the club for 23 years. Never felt unsafe going out of there, or I fear for the bartenders leaving there at 2:30 in the morning. I had an incident where I didn't have a vehicle. I was working with Paul Friday night, had my husband come get me. He parked his vehicle down near Sergio's in the store, sitting there, had his parking lights on, car running, he's on his phone, heard somebody say, okay, let's go, looked over, it wasn't me. It was another woman that jumped in the car with him. I'm coming out, and he freaked out, which I then warned him, don't sit here with your car running and the doors unlocked, but that is presumption. I had a camera put in my car because it's been scratched up this. I don't know who's leaning on the hood of my car, smoking or doing whatever, damaged onto vehicles. But I never up until recently felt unsafe leaving there, and I've been there for years. And if I don't feel safe, and I'm a volunteer there and part of the board, how do we expect our members to feel safe? As Joe said, we need help. He's there during the day, I'm there at night. We don't know what else to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you all heard, the testimony from three people, this is every day in the life of the Portuguese American Center, who have contributed heavily to the fabric of this city, and they're now, I say it, undesaged. They happen to have a place along Gorm Street, Chow Street, in that area there. If you get off the connector and take the Gorm Street exit, you come down this area. It's a gateway to the city. This is a gateway, and this is what you're going to see. Welcome to Lowell, a destination city, and you're going to, and I don't know the answer. I don't know what to do. I'm not telling you that the police are not doing their job, they are. I'm not telling you that the DPW are not doing their job. I see them all the time cleaning up the South Common, cleaning up the area. That's all they're doing, all the time. For what? For what? Because you wake up in the morning, you go to work, or you come down the corridor, or you go to the Portuguese American Center, you see the same thing over and over again. My daughter works for a dentist, 21 George Street. The woman is shooting up in her gums so that nobody can see that she's got track marks because she's got it under her skin, under her lip. Next day, she takes off her shoe, and she's shooting up in between her toes because nobody can see her feet and see the needle marks going all down her arm because she... because she probably is around people she don't want them to know. She's a drug addict. What they fail to tell you is that people, they've seen people using EBT cards to buy drugs. They come into their center, people are sleeping there, the people are getting free food. They're not eating it there, they're eating it around the city. They're eating it in their neighborhood, throwing the papers and trash all over. People on drugs don't care. They have sex in the daytime, in broad daylight, they don't care. That urge doesn't go away because you're a drug addict or you're homeless. Now, I have compassion for people and homeless people. I want to get them off the street. I want to put them in a facility so we can de, de, I don't know, de-escalate this problem and turn them into productive people. I firmly believe it can be done. It can't be done on the street where influences are passed on from one person to another, and it's a vicious cycle because nobody's watching them, nobody cares about them. And we want people to come into our city. I don't know what to do. I'm going to bring this up for the next two years until we can figure out what we can do. It isn't that I'm bringing it up because it's an election issue, it's an election time. That's already gone past. I'm very, very concerned about this. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody. I'm begging to try to find an answer. What can we do? When they take a flagpole and they bend it in half and they burn the American flag, what other disrespect can they do? I know poor people that are probably destitute, they don't have anything. Do they have to destroy? Do they have to live like slobs? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I don't know where to go. That's why I say, can we put something together and discuss this issue and see what we can do? I mean, the police are at wit's end. It's like, they have rights, we have nothing. We're the victims, we're the victims here. They have all the rights in the world to destroy a little at a time. They're chipping away at the fabric of this city, and I'm tired of it. And yet we say, let's find them a place to live. You can't find them a place to live, they can't even take care of themselves. They're on drugs, they need to be detoxified, they need that. They need someone to look after them and try to get into their mind. And if we can have a hypnotist that can hypnotize people and say, you're not going to smoke again, and they don't, is there not a hypnotist that can take these drug addicts and say, you're not going to do drugs anymore? I don't know. I'm desperate. I'm really desperate. I don't want to come and bring this up all the time, but I listen to stories like this. It breaks my heart. Good people are the victims now. That's not the way this city should be. And I feel bad because I've said it before and I'm going to say it again. Lowell is like with a neon sign saying, come on into Lowell, we have all these amenities for you. And people are being dropped off at the borders of this city. Don't think I'm lying, I'm not, I'm telling you the truth. People are being dropped off, go to Lowell. But yet the surrounding communities are not helping us. You don't see this in Andover, you don't see this in Carlisle or Westford. But we're seeing it here, and we have all their problems. And I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but until we can figure out what we're going to do, this is going to get worse. And I'm trying to make you aware that, I mean, people somehow probably don't want to be bothered with this. But it's a problem. If we are elected officials, we have to do something, we have to think, we have to put our thinking caps on and help people like this. When the seniors won't come out and go to their club that they supported all their life because this element is there scaring them and possibly robbing them, something is wrong with society, and we have to help. Because the next group that's going to come here next week probably will be the Hispanics. And they probably have the same problem in another section of the city. And I'm tired of it. We have to do something. We got to take back our city, we got, there's got to be an answer. I don't know what it is, I'm trying to, I could go on and on, I don't want to belabor the issue. Thank you for suspending the rules to allow me, so the people can, but we're doing the best we can. I don't know what to do. But thank you for coming out of your way here to speak this evening. My heart is broken for you. I know what you're going through. I see it every day. We're trying with the co-op team, a little at a time, we're getting people jobs, we're getting them housing, we're getting them cleaned up, we're mentoring them. We have a co-op team that does a tremendous job. I'm their biggest cheerleader because I see firsthand the good that they do. But it's too little of a time. We need to do more at once. But I'm sorry to bring it up, I have to, I have to say it. It's not that I don't like the homeless people, but they have a problem and they need help. And I'm not turning my back to say, oh, well, so what, you know, it's not going to happen. We have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Samara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank the people from the organization, excuse me, for coming before us to talk about this problem. I think, Madam Manager, I think you're aware that all of us at some point have come to talk to you about some of these issues that are happening, you know, in the downtown area especially. What bothers me is when people say they're being challenged by people. In other words, it's one thing when you see what's going on, it's another thing when people approach you for money or try to intimidate you in some way. And obviously intimidation has started to be thrown at them. At this point, Madam Manager, the one thing is when people have asked me about what are you doing or what can we do, I'm amazed at how little sometimes people know what their rights are or know what steps, in other words, about calling the police, type of questions to ask, type of information to provide. But is it possible that you could set up a meeting with the police, with these organizations, to get the pertinent information as to what's been going on? But maybe they can start outlining an approach that the organization can take on dealing with it. In other words, what steps that they have. And the police will be able to explain to them what steps, or the Health Department, what steps that they can take. But then maybe publicize the results of some of these meetings in the neighborhood groups so people can understand, okay, we have a problem. It's a problem that's a national problem, it's a worldwide problem, it's happening everywhere. And there is no magic bullet to fix this. But I know with what you've been doing with the homeless, there are a lot of programs that are in place. But this is sort of a different situation. This is about being challenged, about people feeling somewhat threatened. And that's what we don't have, have to have. So if there's a possibility of, from this, from a meeting, developing some type of outline, I'm not talking about, you know, a whole program at this point, but basic information.
Do you have, Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you. I know the police, we've met with the police, and I know they've been out to some of the businesses. They've gone in to talk to them, to let them know. We'll make sure that, we'll have a meeting hopefully tomorrow to come up with an update and a strategy. But they have been out there, this is a very challenging problem. I completely empathize with the people here tonight. And, you know, what is happening, the police do go and try and move those people who are, you know, it's not loitering, they're just, you know, trying to cause havoc in the street and in the neighborhood. Businesses that have been there for over 30 years, never saw this happen before. You know, there's a number of potential factors, but we will, that said, we'll talk to the police again and maybe meeting with people from the club, that may be the next step. I know they've talked to the neighborhood groups as well. But, you know, this is something that just cannot be tolerated. I drove by there myself, broad daylight, on the weekend, and just can't understand why these people are congregating the way they are, in parking lots, on the street, causing all kinds of havoc. They don't belong there, they don't live there. I don't believe they're, you know, anyway, I do think they come from other places. I don't know why they're, they feel comfortable to be doing this. But as I said, I know, I know Captain Kilmartin has been out there many times, I know the police have been. But we will, that said, we will certainly follow up with the neighborhood, with the businesses, and come up with a plan that we can make workable, that we all working together. It's unfair that people feel unsafe. And especially with this group in this neighborhood, which we all know have been involved, you know, in their clubs, in their culture, in their city for many, many years. They're not afraid to be part of helping out in their neighborhood, beautifying their neighborhood. But this is just ridiculous. And I think, Councilor Mercy mentioned, the police move them out, move them on and get them out. And one of the speakers said, and before they finish their report, these people are back. They don't care what the police have to say. It's a terrible situation, and it just can't be tolerated. So I don't have the immediate solution. We will bring people together again and just stay at this because it's just not acceptable that any section, any section of the city gets overrun and overtaken by people who want to do nothing but destroy. That's not acceptable. So there are challenges in different pockets in terms of homeless camps, and we're working on that. And we're working to get people help. The co-op team works very hard to get people help who want help. You know, we have outreach workers that we have funded to go out in the camp, so to speak, or on the street to work one-on-one with people. What are you doing here? What do you need? We can help you get treatment, we can help you do these things. We have, I think, one of the challenges is, many of the individuals we're talking about just don't want help. They seem to want to continue this lifestyle. It's not acceptable, it's just not acceptable to cause public safety and health and risks for the greater community. Totally not acceptable. You know, there's a point where rights and civil rights start and end. And then when you're creating a public safety issue, which is what's happening here, you're creating a health risk because of conditions. We cannot allow that to persist, period. So again, we will certainly get double down on this and in this neighborhood and meet with all the people affected because it's just unfair and unacceptable.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, I agree, it's unfair. And it's unfortunate. You know, there's plenty of public services that we've talked about at Infinitum for the last months, years. And people should not have to live in fear. They shouldn't have to feel harassed. They certainly should not have to experience destruction of property. And the Portuguese people are hardworking people, they care about their clubs, they care about their family, they care about the city, they care about their neighborhood. So it's not an easy problem, however. If people are breaking the law, then there are consequences. So when the police are just moving them along, that's one thing. But if it's more than loitering, if they're going back, then there are repercussions. And we don't want to turn into a police state, but, you know, the inmates can't run the prison either when they know that they can get away with, or they've been allowed to get away with at any level, you know, malfeasance. So, and we'll have to continue to bring this up until the problem's solved. And I understand it's neighborhood by neighborhood, it's camp by camp. But I think that we need to let them know. And the message has been sent to the services for it. And as you mentioned, Madam Manager, they don't want to. They want to leave, they want to live this sort of reckless lifestyle that's wreaking havoc on some parts of the city. So whatever it's going to take, increased police presence is one thing. But if they're violating the law, then, you know, they're going to have to be arrested or they're going to have to be penalized like every other law-abiding citizen. So it's unfortunate that, you know, that neighborhood, closely knit neighborhood, is kept clean, the businesses have to experience it. But we do have to do something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is an incredible situation, and people shouldn't have to put up with it. But, you know, through you, to the city manager, I think this is a good idea, obviously. We sit down and discuss it with the police and the different organizations and so forth, and what we can actually do. But to be honest with you, I think that, which is mentioned tonight, the police are doing the best they can. There needs to be someone else in that equation. And that someone else would be the courts and the district attorney. These people have to be brought into that equation. Because you could be bringing people into court all day long, and if they're walking out the back door, this is a complete waste of time. So in other words, everyone has to do their job. And as I said, they are a big component to this equation. So I think we need to include them somehow. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that is a good point. During COVID, this was very difficult with the courts. I know the police would arrest people and they were, the courts were not holding anybody because of COVID. They weren't taking anybody into custody unless it was a major felony and so forth. And that actually exacerbated the problem that we're seeing today. I get it, there's a lot of, you know, maybe reasons the courts were doing that. But I think it is worthwhile to have a sit-down, you know, with the police, with the court, with the outreach workers, everybody who has been working on the by-name list of everybody who's on the street. What's their story, why are they there, what have they been offered, are they not doing that? We just need to truly band together to address this. So that's a good suggestion as far as involving the courts and the district attorney.
Thank you. Councilor Mercy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll only speak one more time, I won't speak again. But Councilor Conway hit the nail on the head. This is exactly the truth, and I forgot to mention this portion of it. I know for a fact that there's word in the courthouse with some judges that say to the police, don't bring, don't tie up the courts with this. Don't tie up the courts with this. So word spreads on the street, we could do whatever we want, we're not going to get hurt by it. They could, many years ago, people would go to court and they'd have to come back on another court date. They weren't doing it because nothing was ever happening. So through the wisdom of the superintendent of police and Ken LaValle and the sheriff, they worked to compromise, and they initiated a warrant apprehension unit so that when you had to go to court and you defaulted, they were on you. And that's what we need here. We need a message. It's like the broken window syndrome. If you could keep breaking windows and get away with it, you're going to have tons of broken windows all over the place. But if the word is spread, it's the power of that word and the fear that we better not do it, we're going to go to jail or we're going to get in trouble. Too bad we, I was with the sheriff today, it's too bad we couldn't sit down with him and say, could you organize a portion of your prison so that these people that are committing crimes like this, destroying public property and burning flags, and that they go to court and they're going to jail. They're going to go to jail. You spread this word around and you'll see that our city will be cleaner. And this is the God's truth. In California, people were going into CVSs and they were in the San Francisco area. They were walking out with bags of stuff because they knew that they're not going to go, if they go to court, they're going to get a slap on the wrist and leave. Well, I'd like to get a slap on the wrist and fill bags and bags of, you know... bags and bags of, you know, merchandise. How fair is that to the people that spend their money to open up a CVS, and this is what happens? They have to close down six CVSs in the circumference of a certain portion of the San Francisco area closed because they were fed up. Are we going to have that happen here? God, I hope not. Are we going to be closing clubs and say, you know, battening up your doors, battening up the hatches? We're not going to, we don't want you to open anymore. Then they won. Let's not let them win. We got to do something. We got to fight. We're the victims here. And I'm sick and tired of it. That, I won't say another word. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you. Thank you, the speakers. Being after seven o'clock, we'll get into the general public hearings. 401, ordinance to create a position salary for epidemiologist health department. I'll open the hearing to all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick explanation. This is a grant-funded position. The state is, during the pandemic, was having contact tracing in epidemiologists through the state services. Those are going to come to an end at the end of this month. However, in lieu of them running contact tracing and epidemiology services, they're giving grants to communities to staff these positions. We took up one a couple of weeks ago, actually, for contact tracers, to hire two contact tracers in-house to trace COVID cases. We received many, many applicants for those jobs, people who had worked for the state, who are looking, and are local and are looking to work. And so, we're, we're very encouraged by that. This is the second half of the grant, the epidemiologist. And again, that's why we, we want to create the position, but it is 100% grant-funded. We also see a benefit of having an in-house in the health department, an epidemiologist to, to work on just the city and Lowell cases. So, I just wanted to give the background of this position.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Any questions? Roll call?
Counsel Chow, Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Thank you. Public hearing, utility, public hearings. Open up National Grid, request installation of a handhole, and 120 feet of conduit for the service, for service to cell antennas on Appleton Street, pole number 17. Open up the hearing to anyone in favor.
I think there is a designer here from National Grid.
Yes, that is me.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi. Did you want to speak in favor, or are you all set?
It's pretty much what you said, Mr. Mayor. We're looking to put a handhole on the, the southeast corner of Appleton and Thorndike, and head up in the easterly direction of about 120 feet with conduit in primary in order to facilitate the cell antennas that are going up, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Samaras. 502, National Grid, request installation of the gas main extension from 35 to 79 Pratt Avenue. Open up the hearing to anyone in favor.
Hi, my name's Diana Cuddy. I'm in favor of the gas main extension.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Conway. 503, new singular wireless, DBA AT&amp;T, request installation of small cell antenna on existing pole at 84 University Ave at Riverside Street. I'll open it up to anyone in favor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there you go.
Good evening, Madam Manager, city councilors. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T. I've appeared before, it's good to see everyone in person for a change, but I've appeared before the council a number of times. I think this is our 20th small cell facility. We're proposing the small cell facility near the intersection of University and Riverside. We had met with the city engineer regarding the placement and design, and received their conditional approval. Likewise, we met with representatives from the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, and they agreed that they had no objection to the design and location. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's a similar design, design to what we've done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Mercy?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor, I'm very concerned about the three utility that came before us this evening. And, and maybe this might sound like nothing, but I just want to know, do we need to have all these papers? Because I'm going to tell you, the first one had 12 pages. 12 city officials, nine, 12 pages is 108 pages just for this council alone. The next one, there's 27 pages times nine, and there's 240 pages. I don't know who puts this together, but is this a rule that we as a council have to get all these pages? Because then the next one has 19 pages. That's a hun, times nine, there's 171 pages. When you add that all together, times nine, you know, somebody did a lot of work here. Do we need all this? Because, you know what? I'm, look at this. Here's an example of what I'm showing you. I can't even see that. I need a magnifying glass. And I'm not going to read this anyway. So, I don't know why I'm trying to save a lot of work here for someone, unless it's a rule now. I don't know if it is. But this is a waste of time for me. You know, look, this, this is only one, one. I don't mean any disrespect, but there's no reason to get all this unless it's a rule. I don't know the law. Is, is the law said, "We as a council have to get this?" I want to know how many of my nine colleagues read this, and, because I couldn't even see half of the stuff. And I don't know the schematic designs. I'm not an engineer. I don't understand it. If this man says it's fine, and I don't see any residents that are but this, that are, the only time my, my antennas go up is if someone from the neighborhoods here and said, "I object to this," then I'm going to, I'm going to try to figure this situation out. But this, to me, this, this is...
So, why don't we ask, through the manager of the solicitor, the standard procedure?
The, I understood the, the point that you're making. We certainly can review and see if there are changes that we can make to the process. Some of these are required in terms of notices that go out to other butters. However, in terms of the information coming to the council, we can review that. We can also look to provide it in electronic format only.
Sure. Madam?
Yeah, I, I was just going to suggest that there may indeed be requirements under some of these, but the packages are electronic. The, the entire packets posted online for the public as well as the council. We could perhaps on these, and just indicate to the council that the, you know, attachments are online if they want. And that would save, trust me, a lot of copying and...
Right. It's save yourself some time.
Yeah.
If you send the cover letter here of what's going on, that's beautiful.
If the council is satisfied, but, but we will have everything online anyway because we post everything digitally.
Sure. I just trying to save money and time here.
Sure. Mr. Clark, you have something to add?
Yeah, just, just if I, if I may, Madam Manager. The process is, they, they file it me originally, and then I send it up to the city engineers. I can tell you, Counsel, that other towns kind of don't involve the council in those matters. It's through the engineer's office. Cambridge has their, a whole board that kind of looks at it and makes that decision on that. But I just take that whole package in. These packages that you have tonight have been cowed a little bit on my end because they were much, much larger. So, I think, as the manager indicated, if we just get that one page from the city engineer, and we can put, in an area where we can put the whole petition online for anyone to speak, or they can come into my office because I, I save them anyways. But it would be a lot less work and a lot less going back and forth with the engineers. So, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion. But I also would, would think too that we could revisit this and see procedurally if there's some maybe a better, a better, a better way to go about it as other towns and other cities, especially larger cities, approach this.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Just my humble opinion.
Thank you. I like your humble opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Thank you. Moving on, communications from the city manager. Motion response, A, woodworking partnerships. Any questions? Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the very positive report, Madam Manager. I, it's great to see that there was interest from a number of the organizations that do engage young adults in woodworking. And I happened to be at, at an event at Youth Build after, just after they were in receipt of your letter to gauge interest, and it sounds like they couldn't wait to find out what the, what the next steps would be, including the, the young adults who are entering the construction program. So, I look forward to, to seeing this unfold, and, and great to see that we might, you know, see some of these, the benches or tables placed next spring. So, thank you very much for the response.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion response? Next motion response, backflow preventers. Any questions? Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there was a lot, a lot of good information in this response, not just related to the, the potential use of, of backflow preventers in the areas of the city where, where there is sometimes, you know, water backing up into, into basements. In, in the response, the, from Mr. Young, he, he states that in the, the handful of areas left in the city that do sometimes experience these backups, that there are planned projects to take care of them. I'll, I'll note that the, the backflow preventer, cost-sharing program was actually brought up to me by, by a resident who lived in an area of the city that formerly had experienced backups, but was actually recently addressed as one of the areas that the wastewater utility was able to address and, and stop those from happening. So, it was great to see that, you know, the, the remaining handful of areas were, are included for, for planned projects that may be able to, to eliminate this problem entirely, hopefully, in, in the near future. But given that, the, the number of areas impacted by it are, are small, I'm guessing the, you know, the, the cost of a potential cost-sharing program, you know, may be, may be small as well, you know, for, for the number of areas that haven't been addressed yet. So, as the response mentions, you know, this would be an issue for the ARPA finance manager once hired to determine whether ARPA funds may be eligible for use for, for a cost-sharing program. So, I'm hoping we can, we can kind of put a pin in this issue, and, and later on defer to the, to the finance manager on whether, you know, we might be able to save some of our residents some money if, if the installation of a preventer would be beneficial to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on backflow? Madam Manager, informational website redesign?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We've been working for the past several months in my office, Phil Jeffroy, to design the website redesign, improve. So, the Civic Plus initiated the full redesign. It's going to go live tomorrow. It's also going to be a work in progress. But some of the improvements include improved language accessibility using Google Translate. Up to 100 languages can be transferred, translated in, 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 in real time, instantaneously. Improved displays, improved information regarding alerts. That could have be anything from road closures to weather issues, snowstorms, testing, hours of operations, parking bans, all of the things that people like to know in, in real time, as well as updated imagery. So, we're also going to continue to work with department heads about improving what they have online and what they have for their department in availability. So, again, just upgrading information for the public and for access. So, first, first launch is tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions on the Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This improvement, you know, really, I know a lot of residents going to be most welcome for this improvement, particularly the language accessibility and the, the alert on the, the road closures, traffic, and so on. So, this is great, great news. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Communication, reappointments, Madam Manager, reappointments to the Council on Aging?
Yes, we've put before you the request to reappoint people on the Council on Aging. All of the individuals before you currently are serving, and we're just asking that the council act on reappointing. Or actually, it's a communication regarding the reappointments.
Okay. Thank you. So, need a motion to adopt the following. Andrew Holster, John Lawler, Judith Herbert, Anne Marie Porter, and Malaka Tang to the, to the board. Counsel Noon?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Conway. Roll call? Counsel Chow?
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Votes on the city manager. Vote to accept and expend elder mental health outreach grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City Council Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city Lowell to accept and expend a grant from the Massachusetts Council on Aging regarding the elder mental health outreach grant pro, award in the amount of $75,000 for use by the city Lowell Council on Aging. Any questions? Need a motion to adopt, motion, yeah, motion to adopt by Counsel Elliot, and seconded by Counsel Mercia. Roll call?
Counsel Chow.
Counsel Conway. Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
7-2, vote to approve the exemption of Gregory Dalamodis, MGLC 268A, Section 20. of Gregory Bellamotis for the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section Twenty. Any questions? Motion to adopt by Council Noon, seconded by Council Samaras. Roll call?
Counsel Chau. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke. Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Seven years.
Ordinances from city manager, ordinance amending Chapter fifty-six dash five, legal holidays and vacation. Need a motion to refer a public hearing on November twenty-third at, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM. By Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Council Elliott. Subcommittee reports, none. Petitions, we have one claim, property damage, need a motion to report to, motion to refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Noon.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Council Mercier?
With this ten-point-two, this request will no doubt be referred to the Law Department, and sometimes we never hear anymore about it. However, I want to have the Law Department check into whether that portion of land is a secondary fire access for Cabot Crossing. I don't know whether that changed over the years, but at one point it was. But whatever the case, I would request that the recommendation for this request be given back to this council to see what the outcome was in the final decision. Could we do that? I need to, I would like to know that.
Yes, I don't, if I may, they, they all come back. I don't know which ones haven't come back, but they, they all ultimately have to come back to the-
All right, well, this one I specifically-
Yep.
Need to know that. So if you could check out whether this is a secondary fire access route for the Corbett Crossi- that Corbett Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cabot Crossing, Cabot Crossing, sure.
Count, Mr. Clerk, do you have something to add?
Ah, yes, just in line of what you said, Counselor. I got a, a request to include in the record, and I sent it up to the Law Department already, exactly from a citizen, exactly expressing that concern. So that, that's been set up to the Law Department, too, and is part of the record as well.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Council Noon, do you have questions?
Mr. Mayor can be bundled, ten-point-three to ten-point-five.
Yep, okay, so need, sure. Ten-one, we need a motion to refer to the Law Department for report and recommendation by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Samaras. And then ten-two and ten-three, sure, motion to bundle by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. Ten-two.
Ten-three.
What?
It's ten-three. Ten-three to ten-five.
No, we didn't do ten-two yet.
Yeah, we just did-
Ten-two, we just did.
It's ten-three, sir.
Oh, all right. Okay, all right. Okay, ten, ten-three to ten-five. Yep. Boston Gas, DBA National Grid, request insulation of four hundred feet of new two-inch plastic along Bassett Street. Ten-four, Boston Gas, request insulation of replacement gas main on Woodward, Woodward, Orchid, Oxford, Wright, Starboard, Cortland, Waterford, West Fifth, and Adams Street. Ten-five, Boston Gas, request insulation of replacement gas main on Walker, Batch Elder, Litchfield, Ready, and Hampton Street. And ten-six, Verizon, New England, request insulation of four underground conduits along six-fifty-seven Mendelsec Street to, to the Lowell Ave. So. Motion to refer to a public hearing on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM. All those in favor?
Motion.
Yeah, motion to refer. Yeah, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, seven PM, by Councilor Noon, seconded by Council Mercier. motions. Eleven-two, Council Mercier, request city manager have transportation engineer prepare sixty-day trial for a handicap parking sign in front of two-ninety-one Summer Street, seconded by-
Second.
Councilor Noon, Council Mercier.
Yes, thank you. The motion more or less speaks for itself, but we do have whole classes, like fatherhood classes, matador classes. One of the teachers is handicapped, and so this is for that person. Thank you. Sometimes there's so many cars, there's no place for this person who's handicapped, that is a teacher. We would just like to have her have a spot to park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, eleven-three, Council Elliott, request city ma- request city council discuss and act on the next steps to implement the results of the ballot question allowing residents to vote for the mayor, seconded by Council Mercier, Council Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In February of this year, the council voted to place a non-binding question on the ballot to get the input of the voters, to give them the right to vote for mayor and change the way that the mayor is selected under the system. Let's be clear, since day one, there's never been any discussion about changing the mayor from a weak to a strong mayor's. Well, to me, the voters have spoken, and their message is loud and clear. The people want to vote for the mayor. This issue has been talked about for quite some time, and to me, now I feel it's incumbent upon this body to listen to the will of the people and act on it. Motions have been filed, subcommittees have been convened, it's been discussed at the council meeting. I supported giving the, the power to the people at the outset, and some wanted to get input from, from the people, and I supported that as well. And now the results are in, and they're clear. Seventy-five point five percent of the electorate voted in favor of allowing the people to vote for the mayor, to continue to select the mayor, the figurehead, the chair of the school committee. Because of the lawsuit, I do understand, and the consent decree, Lowell is now under, apparently until the, until the end of time, that we need to get permission from plaintiffs and approval from the judge to make this change. To me, it's, it's a logical step for the judge to see that this is just another extension of the democratic process, the democratic rights of the voters, and agree to this change. So I, implementing this change, to me, will accomplish two goals. It'll give more power to the people, and it'll also eliminate the politics that goes on right after the election, behind the scenes, to get the votes for mayor. So to me, I've stated this in the past, people need to earn the support of the entire city to be the mayor, not just a district. That's how the city of Worcester operates. That's the system that they operate. They select the mayor from at-large candidates. They have to, first, they have to win their seat, and at the same time, they have to declare that they're interested in being the mayor. Seems to work in the city of Worcester. I'm sure that we can make it work here in the city of Lowell. So, you know, the only question that had been discussed in the past, whether both district and at-large candidates should be allowed to declare for mayor. To me, the answer is simple. It should be at-large candidates. I think we need to reinvent this. If you want to run to represent the entire city, then you need to run at large and then represent the city as a whole. So I hope this, I hope this motion passes, and we find out what the next steps are, if I'm incorrect, but I do believe that we need to now get permission or reach out to the plaintiffs and, and the federal court to get that permission to move this forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion passes. Last motion tonight, by myself, request city manager have transportation engineer look at off-street parking regulations for the condominiums throughout the city of Lowell, seconded by-
Second.
Council Noon. Council Mercier, do you mind, and just speak on this?
Mayor Leahy.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say on this, but I just noticed throughout the city, there's different developments that we let builders come in. They happen to be on narrow streets, and it seems like a lot of the parking is in front of their condos when they have plenty of parking behind it. So when we go to explore this, I can give you examples like Conker, Andrew Street, I believe it is, over by the Sacred Heart Church, and situations like that. In the afternoon, you have people parking, too many people parking on the street. The buses can't take the turns, probably fire trucks can't take the turns either, but if we're going to allow these projects to go ahead, we have to make sure that we adhere to the parking regulations. So I'd just like to take a look at certain situations around the city and make sure that it's safe for everybody and traffic's flowing. So that's the gist of the motion.
Thank you. Any, any further comment? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
You want to just finish it out?
Any announcements? Madam Manager, any announcements?
No, not, not for me. Council Mercier.
Wait, the city clerk has an announcement.
I feel I'm speaking a lot tonight, but just a matter of housekeeping. Normally, the meeting after Thanksgiving is usually canceled by the body because of the fact that that Thursday and Friday, the building is not open, and we have a Tuesday meeting that week, and Wednesday's the only day that, that we can turn it around for a meeting on, on that following Tuesday. So usually, historically, the, the body has taken a, a vote to just cancel that meeting. It's on November thirtieth.
Okay. Hearing, the city clerk, do I have a motion to cancel that particular meeting?
Sure, motion.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Noon. Roll call, do we need?
Yeah, we do.
Roll call.
Thank you. Counsel Chau. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke. Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Seven years.
Motion passes. Motion to adjourn by-
Just one announcement for-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, thank you. The Veterans, Veterans Day observant, observation, Greater Lowell Veterans Council will be holding their annual Veterans Day Observation, yeah, Observation honoring the brothers and sisters of post-nine-eleven war and the last twenty years. It's November eleventh, starts at ten, goes until about noon time at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and there is a, an event tomorrow at eight o'clock at the Lowell High School for anyone who can attend for Veterans Day.
Thank you. I didn't want to rush anybody. Anybody have any other announcements? Hearing, none. Motion to adjourn. Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. No objection to that.
Thank you.